Welcome to the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education Regular Meeting for Monday, April 11th, 2022. Mr. Clinton Sherman, call the board, please.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here.
Mrs. Steph.
Here.
Mrs. Ennis.
Here.
Four members present.
Any questions or discussion? Superintendent's report, please.
Okay, and Mrs. Pavers has agreed to join me because this was definitely a full committee. We had a huge adoption this year. Our ELA curriculum, our English Language Arts curriculum, kindergarten through eighth grade, that contract is up. And so it really gave us a good opportunity to explore options. And then I will go through some of the state Ohio Department of Ed initiatives because some of these initiatives are driving the type of curriculum that we need to look at in order to adopt. So, these were our team members. We had a sprinkling of, Melanie Sprinkle. Yeah. That helps. We had a little bit of assistance from the elementary school. We have Gen Ed teachers on the committee. We have intervention specialists, and each building administrator sat on the team as well. Let me talk about that first. So, Ohio's Plan to Raise Literacy. If you're not familiar with it, there is a link here. I can share this little slideshow out. But it's, the big thing that's happening with this Ohio's Plan to Really Raise Literacy is using the simple view of reading. And I think almost all of the buildings over the past couple of years have really been trained in this simple view of reading. And then, you know, these are just the highlights of what this plan is. It's like an, I don't know, it's a big document. And there's lots of pieces to it, but these are kind of the highlights that I found that if you're not quite sure what it is, if you go to that link, it will pull up the whole document and you're able to look at that. I did include, they've come up with at the state level, a new dyslexia law. And in that law, essentially, what it says is we have to identify kids. So we have a small team that is looking at this dyslexia law that is running out of the middle school. It's myself, Karen Blackburn, Katie Shea, and Matt Malier. And we meet regularly on this law. The problem is, there's some dilemma at the state level. It was put in, it was passed by legislature, and now they're arguing about these universal screeners that are required. And we're supposed to get a handbook, and essentially the law says you have to follow the handbook. Well, they have yet to, and we have to start this next year. We have to universally screen all K through three students. We have to, any four through six parent who requested, or any transferring students within the first 30 days have to be screened. And they're going to give us a list of universal screeners, but we don't have that list yet either. So hopefully, the board is sometime this week. They will all get together on the same page, but I can't make any promises. So it leaves us in a lot of limbo. But with that, we do understand this Ohio's Plan to Raise Literacy. That's, you know, that hasn't gone away. So with that being said, back in, when did it begin?
Probably in September, October.
Yeah, we started by getting a selection team. We ordered some samples. There is a report called Ed Reports, and it does kind of let you know which curricula are following the science of reading. We surveyed the staff and said, okay, what is it that you're looking for out of our new curriculum? I met with the team. We reviewed the whole process because not everybody was as up to speed, you know, on this, it's a shift. It's a mindset shift of how we're going to teach ELA to our younger kids and even moving into adolescent literacy. There's different components, and we got to learn to drill down. And it's almost like if a kid has a disability in fluency, we need to be able to assess, drill down to what that is, and then what does that instruction look like? So we can target just the kids, sometimes we just say a kid has a reading problem, but what is that reading problem? So then we can really drill down into fluency, and then we can benchmark progress. We're going to work on fluency, and this is what teachers should be doing. You're talking about all these different tiers and things that are like, I think, I love it. I'll be happy to sit down and talk to anybody about it, what we're doing. But you have to have assessments and pieces like that. So we're really looking for a curriculum and reviewing that process. So between November and March, go ahead, Laura.
We met several times as a committee. We also were able to zoom not only with the representatives from the companies, which was extremely beneficial, we were also able to actually zoom with some curriculum directors, some literacy coaches, and actually teachers that were using the curriculums from a variety of different schools. And it was really nice to kind of, I guess, talk one-on-one with some of those teachers and understand their gains and then how they implemented and some of the rough patches that they went through and just kind of get some advice for that.
How would you say the process went?
It was a very interesting process. I had never been a part of a adoption team before. However, I learned a whole lot. It was very interesting to be able to get my hands on the material, go through it myself, actually implement it in my own classroom, look at the differences between the two, and try to decide what I really wanted to use and what I thought was going to be beneficial for my own students.
And so then, just last week, we met as a committee. So we kind of went through all these steps. I really tried to listen to the team and bring what was needed to the table. And, you know, at first we were like, we don't want vendors. We don't want to be bothered with vendors. Then it was like by January, we need to talk to the vendor. Like, we can't not include them. And then it was, man, we'd really love to see some of this in action. And I actually, I did not include it. I spoke with the Kent City Schools Curriculum Director. I spoke with New London prior to meeting. I spoke with Brookside. But, you know, it's nice to have when teachers are talking to teachers about what is happening. We came to what I would call a consensus decision. You will never, ever bring a whole bunch of people in the room and totally walk out 100% on the same page, is what I found out. What I'm doing now is presenting to you our process, because what I'd like to do in May is put it on for the board to approve in May. So I thought it would be important for you guys to kind of understand the process of what we've done. This was kind of, we started with this. And what would you say about this?
Lisa kind of gave us a basic statement, and then we kind of tore it apart and then built it back together. That took an entire meeting because there were things that we wanted to make sure that as language arts teachers, that we really, really felt strongly about. And then finally, this was the consensus. And we went over it again in our last meeting, which was just last week. And honestly, to hear it again out loud, I mean, in a nutshell, that is exactly what we want.
So I think it was important for us to come up with a vision of what the curriculum, what we needed out of it, so that we could keep going back and referring to that. And did we, you know, when we're talking about saying, this is the curriculum we're going to pick. So what we have decided as a consensus decision, it is called, the program is Great Minds is the publisher. It's called The Wit and Wisdom. We discussed, we had one meeting where we did T-charts, pros and cons. We, oh, I forgot it. I was going to bring it. We looked at red flags in curriculum when I'm talking about the different components of reading, the fluency comprehension, vocab, phonemic awareness, and motivation for adolescent literacy. Like, there's all these different components. So we had a lot to look at. And so we knew we weren't going to find the perfect solution. Here's what I will tell you. If, going with wit and wisdom, we've spent a lot of time over the past two years training our teachers in foundations. So if you have any students in the elementary school, you might have heard about foundations. We would, we're going to be able to keep foundations and all of that material, because wit and wisdom is kind of the comprehension and fluency, where foundations will do some of that phonological awareness pieces. We're going to add GOs to it, which is kind of the readers that match the skills we're teaching kids, so kids can actually pick up books and read based on the skills they've learned. The upper grades, so that was kind of the feel from the elementary. The upper grades felt that this curriculum would be rigorous and challenging and kind of meet us, meeting some of our goals that we need for our kids to be reading independently and kind of, they just, all upper grades from middle school up, felt that this was the curriculum to go with. So that is what, how we got to this process, and it was a lot, it was a great year for me to learn how to do this. I had never done this process before. And I did bring some materials. They are over here. I will tell you, they did not send as many hard copies. They gave us a lot of links.
We have online program.
Online program. I will be presenting our teachers. It made it very clear in the survey, they liked the print and the online components because we still want to have both. So I will be getting quotes for both. And there is some materials. These are the GOs, and they come with the little books. Now, this is only K-2, but this is where our kids are learning to read. And they're very specific. And then, this is actually like a teacher's manual, and there are student materials, and they do actually whole novels.
Correct.
The other one didn't do novels. So there were pros and cons. I really feel confident in the teachers and the committee and the time that we invested saying, okay, we're going to meet these needs, and this is what the team decided. So, and free, anybody who wants to talk about it, ask questions, gives us a little bit of time before it's on the May board agenda. Any questions?
I do have a couple of questions. I actually had people reach out to me about this.
Okay.
With concerns at different levels. I don't know, they were wondering if you were visiting schools that had this. It sounds like you've talked to some curriculum directors. Have you guys talked to other teachers from other districts that have been using this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because there was some concern.
Yeah, we had called them roundtables.
Okay. There were some, this is just what people brought to me. And I read a few articles about at the elementary level being a little more rigorous, and kids saying, when do we get to go recess? I mean, like, just.
They're both, both were very rigorous.
Yeah, well, and like, just, you know, one of the principals walking down the hallway, and there's nothing on the hallway. Why don't we have anything, no creativity? And they're like, there's no time, because it is so rigorous.
And I think what we have to do, there is, there is going to be rigor, and I think when you look at some of our scores, and then what will, what will help us.
And I'm not saying, don't go that route. I'm just saying, these are things that people have brought to my attention.
Sure, sure. And what I would say to you is, that's why when we get our tiers of instruction and our decision trees, and we say, where's, when, when do we fine tune where a kid is lack, like, missing skills? What do we have in place for that kid? Where are our resources to collect them? What I heard, even from most of the teachers we were speaking to, kids kind of rise to it. Believe it or not, in your classroom setting it up, they will, they will. I think that.
I've heard there was like a hard time connecting with material for the kids.
I don't know that, what would you say? I know that the lessons that I taught, one of them was a poem. It was really, really interesting to take it apart, stanza by stanza, line by line. The other thing that I taught, that other part of the lesson that I taught was actually a piece of artwork, and that inspired all kinds of discussion. And to me, that was extremely beneficial. I don't know that we do that kind of appreciation sometimes.
What grade do you teach?
I'm not, I have six and seven.
Okay.
Is that, is that the upper level gift of though?
Sixth grade, yes, and then I have one seventh grade, but I also have two Gen Ed seventh grade classes.
Okay, so. And you felt this kind of like a pilot?
Yes, yes, yes.
And you felt it went well?
I thought it went extremely well. My students were engaged across all of my classes. But like I said, I just appreciated the fact that it wasn't just, you know, read this story, answer these questions. I thought that there was a lot of discussion built in. We had little writing excerpts that they had to do. They had discussion amongst themselves before we ended up doing it as whole group.
And I think, I think it builds some background sometimes.
Yes.
There's a lot of background building. So when you start introducing some of these topics that they might not be familiar, you're starting to build that vocab and background, and that might be something we're not as used to as teachers. It hasn't been necessarily part of our focus all the time. So, do I believe it'll be rigorous? Do I believe we will have bumps and bruises?
Rigorous is okay. I don't mind.
Rigorous will be fine. Who we have, who we have to.
I want to make sure they're still engaging, they're still being excited about learning.
Yeah. And I will tell you, a lot of that, some of that will be on who's presenting that, how you read that poem, or how we set the excitement for learning. I'm not saying, like, some of that is going to be the tone, and so we have to really train our teachers. We have to make sure they have time for PD. We have to make sure that they feel really comfortable with the curriculum. We have to make sure that maybe we build in some time for the trainers to come in and watch lessons and help them. I think it's how we roll it out.
So the program has opportunities for that, like, even question.
Yeah, I'm waiting to hear this on that. I'm waiting, yes. Yeah, I don't have all of that yet because we just decided, and I felt like I needed to give you guys a little background on how we did this, how we got here, and why we got here.
So I have a couple of questions too. First off, is there going to be a student print book for each student to have in their hands, too, or is it all electronic?
Nope.
So they'll have a reading book as well?
Yeah.
Okay, with the, other different genres or whatever?
Yeah, they'll have their novels, yes.
And then how does it, how does it work in with the writing component? Does that have a good solid writing component?
As far as the writing goes, like I said, I only taught the two lessons. There are writing pieces in there. I know with wit and wisdom, there's also a research project that's involved. When you were talking about artwork and, or things hung in the hallway and stuff, I know that I, as I have done my own research, just seeing different projects, a lot of Socratic seminars and that kind of thing where the kids are thinking through things, writing things down, and like I said, the research projects are involved with that as well.
And then as far as aligning with the Ohio standards, does it align well with our standards? I know, like, a lot of the book companies get that. It's great, and then it doesn't.
And they're selling to the whole nation.
Exactly.
So we will be spending next year, just so you guys know, working into our PD plan, a lot of horizontal, vertical alignment and looking at, and especially with this adoption, we need to spend time looking at those things so that our teachers can really get their hands, making sure that we're hitting the standards we have to hit.
I mean, you buy these books, it's for everyone, but then they say, oh, we have an Ohio standard edition. Get it, and if not, really, we won't. So it's on the year.
No, we feel pretty confident about that. The writing, we did talk about, we may, moving into next year. What we want to feel like moving into next year is looking for those gaps and still meeting as a team and seeing where those gaps may be. And I want to, I want to go back real quick, Sarah, to what we were talking about is, when you talk, so when you go to that Ohio's Plan and the Science of, the U of Science, the Reading Science Group, I'm messing it up. But when you get to that, it is explicit, systematic, and it feels very teacher-driven. So I think we, as a district, have to make sure that our teachers say, okay, we're teaching that way, but there's still something to project-based learning. And what we liked about wit and wisdom is there was still some of that discussion and collaboration, because that's where you're going to build some of that. Because in a systematic approach, I taught it when I, 20 years ago, it's, it's, if you, it's, it is, we have to do this, we have to do this, because we have to build skills to get here. So we can feel very much like that, but I think we have to then give teachers some of that freedom to use, find those projects, and let kids collaborate, because that was part of our mission too.
Yeah.
They need to continue along with that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And not everybody is going to be jumping up for joy, we realize that.
Anytime you make a big change, there's going to be people for it and people.
Every, every curriculum you find, we could all Google.
There's going to be pros and cons.
There's going to be pros and cons to everything.
I do know new curriculum, it's, they're expensive, but it's an investment, so usually it's a five-year.
So we could do one year. I have a quote for one year, and I have a quote for five years. There's a larger discount for five.
I don't think five, one year, you'd get to know that. You wouldn't get to learn. I mean, I've been.
You would start this process again, and so I think you don't get enough to know, are we making the gains? And you want to compare apples to apples over time.
I don't think one year is enough to even know the whole program.
Yeah, we discussed that at the beginning. We discussed that. So, and I am open for questions, if you have questions that come up. I know it's a long time before the next meeting, but I just felt it was important that we keep, we are looking at a science curriculum as well for middle school, and we kind of have followed, not as large as this, but we kind of followed the same process, so hopefully I'll have that ready to go for the May board meeting as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, we are going to, number two, recommend a resolution to move into executive session for the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employees or the investigation of charges or complaints against an employee or student unless the employer official or student requests a public hearing.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call the board, please.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Haverhill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Steph.
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero, and the time is 6:22. Time return is 7:17.
Moving on with the superintendent's report, before we go on, we're going to remove number three from the report due to the fact that we don't have all the contracts listed that we need to approve. So that will be put on May's agenda.
Number four, recommend a resolution to approve the 2022 through 2025 Vermillion Teachers Association negotiated agreement.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call the board, please. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Haverhill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Steph.
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero.
Number six, recommend a resolution to approve the service agreement for EdClick, a threat assessment software company for threat assessment and monitoring in the amount of $6,770, attachment B.
I'll move.
Second. Any questions or discussion? Call the board, please.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Haverhill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Steph.
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero.
Number nine, recommend a resolution to approve active shooter training from Educators School Safety Network at a cost of $7,941 for the 2022-2023 school year.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? Call the board, please.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Haverhill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Steph.
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero.
All right, moving on to the treasurer's report. Mr. Clinton Sherman.
Thank you. Number one, recommend a resolution to approve the financial report for March 2022, attachment N.
I'll move.
Second.
All right, looking at the general fund revenue by month, through the month of March, the district received $21.6 million in general fund revenue compared to $22.2 million at this time last year and $22 million in fiscal year 20. The district did not receive 100% property tax collection from its largest utility company, and as such, the district will not be made whole until the second half collection, July through August there. This delinquency will cause less revenue to be collected this fiscal year compared to its historical average, but should increase its historical average next fiscal year. As spoke to the county auditor and the county treasurer, they were able to advance approximately 70% of that delinquency to us this fiscal year. And so next fiscal year, somewhere around a quarter million dollars to $300,000 will be extra that we should receive this year. Taking a look at our food service expenditures through the month of March, the district spends, sorry, all funds by that.
Food service is next.
It did correct.
There you go.
Appreciate that. Through the month of March, the district received $690,000 in food service revenue compared to $348,000 at this time last year and $431,000 in fiscal year 20. So with all of our lunches fully reimbursed from the federal government this year, our revenue will continue to outpace our historical averages. Moving on to all funds by revenue, through the month of March, we received $27.6 million in revenue compared to $24.6 at this time last year and $24.8 in fiscal year 20. Again, establishment of the O-70 Capital Projects Fund in February and the subsequent transfer of $2 million from the general fund to establish the O-70 fund, it's basically just inflating our revenue. Also, it would be inflating our expenditures as that comes along as well. Taking a look at expenditures now for the general fund, through the month of March, the district spent $19.7 million from the general fund compared to $17.5 million last year and $17.9 million in fiscal year 20. Again, overall, the district is on pace to spend its historical average minus the $2 million transfer to establish that capital projects fund. Looking at food service expenditures, through the month of March, the district has spent $678,000 in food service compared to $462,000 last year and $618,000 in fiscal year 20. Food service will continue to average higher than our historical averages due to serving more meals, purchasing two new ovens at the middle school, and also increased food costs.
I'll move.
Second.
All right, looking at the general fund revenue by month, through the month of March, the district received twenty-one point six million in general fund revenue, compared to twenty-two point two million at this time last year, and twenty-two million in fiscal year twenty. The district did not receive one hundred percent property tax collection from its largest utility company, and as such, the district will not be made whole until the second half collection, July through August there. This delinquency will cause less revenue to be collected this fiscal year compared to its historical average, what should increase its historical average next fiscal year. As spoke to the county auditor and county treasurer, they were able to advance approximately seventy percent of that delinquency to us this fiscal year, and so next fiscal year, somewhere around quarter million dollars to three hundred thousand will be extra, what we should receive this year. Taking a look at our food service expenditures through the month of March, the district spends... Sorry, all funds by that.
Food service is next.
It did correct me.
There you go.
Appreciate that. Through the month of March, the district received six hundred and ninety thousand dollars in food service revenue, compared to three hundred and forty-eight thousand at this time last year, and four hundred and thirty-one thousand in fiscal year twenty. So with all of our lunches fully reimbursed from the federal government this year, our revenue will continue to outpace our historical averages. Moving on to all funds by revenue, through the month of March, we received twenty-seven point six million in revenue, compared to twenty-four point six at this time last year, and twenty-four point eight in fiscal year twenty. Again, establishment of the O seven O Capital Projects Fund in February, and the subsequent transfer of two million dollars from the general fund to establish the O seven O Fund, it's, it's basically just inflating our revenue, also it would be inflating our expenditures as that comes along as well. Taking a look at expenditures now for the general fund, through the month of March, the district spent nineteen point seven million from the general fund, compared to seventeen point five million last year, and seventeen point nine million in fiscal year twenty. Again, overall, the district is on pace to spend its historical average, minus the two million dollar transfer to establish that capital projects fund. Looking at food service expenditures, through the month of March, the district has spent six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in food service, compared to four hundred and sixty-two thousand last year, and six hundred and eighteen thousand in fiscal year twenty. Food service will continue to average higher than our historical averages due to serving more meals, purchasing two new ovens at the middle school, and also increased food costs. And then taking a look at expenditures for all funds through the month of March, we've spent twenty-one point nine million, compared to nineteen point eight million at this time last year, and twenty point eight million in fiscal year twenty. Total expenditures so far this year are slightly higher than our historical averages. And then lastly, we'll take a look at cash. In the general fund through the month of March, the district has twenty-one point seven million in cash, compared to twenty point eight million at this time last year, and twenty point two million in fiscal year twenty. Looking at food service through the month of March, the district has hundred ninety-three thousand in cash, compared to fifty-nine thousand last year, and a hundred and ninety-one thousand in fiscal year twenty. And then all cash, through the month of March, the district has twenty-seven point three million in cash, compared to twenty-four point three last year, and twenty-three point four million in fiscal year twenty. On the investment side, through the month of March, so far this year, we've earned a hundred and twenty-two thousand in interest, compared to a hundred and forty-four thousand at this time last year. Is the difference a twenty-two thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-eight cents, or fifteen point six percent less? Any questions?
Call roll, please.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Haverhill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved five zero. Number two, recommend a resolution to approve the April appropriations, that attachment G.
I'll move.
Second.
Alls I'm doing back there for the appropriations is just matching what we have in our software and our budgets. I'll keep tweaking these each month that we have for being moving forward until the end of fiscal year. These numbers, for the general fund particularly, should go down a little bit as we get closer to the end of the year, and we close out the O P Os and close out our conferences.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Haverhill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved five zero. Number three, recommend a resolution to accept the following donation to the Ed Babson Scholarship Fund in memory of Lois Babson, as listed.
I'll move.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Haverhill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved five zero. Number four, recommend a resolution to accept the following donation to the boys soccer program in memory of Blit Parsons, in the amount of fifty dollars, to mind Dean and Richard Blue.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Haverhill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved five zero. Number five, recommend a resolution to accept the following donations of eleven thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars from Erie County Community Foundation.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Is that being donated anything in particular, or just the district, or?
The district's general fund.
Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Haverhill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved five zero. Number six, recommend a resolution to transfer thirty-five hundred dollars from the general fund to the Jack Armstrong Scholarship Fund.
I'll move.
I'll second.
So what this is, is this just, we, we had given a little bit more of a scholarship than we had received in donations back in two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and eighteen. So we honored our award, and now we just need to make that transfer for this year, and then that'll be the last one.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Haverhill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved five zero. Number seven, recommend a resolution to pay gunlock three thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents to dispose or replace an expansion tank at the Million Elementary School, as attachment H.
I'll move.
Second.
This is just a compliance piece, our purchase order was, was deleted from our system, and so we needed to create a new one. However, we received an invoice before we were able to create that purchase order, and as such, I'm unable to approve a then and now of more than three thousand dollars. I need the board's permission to do so.
Questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Haverhill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved five zero. And number eight, recommend a resolution to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three salary schedule for administrators, supervisors, and central office, and as attachment I.
I'll move. I'll second. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Haverhill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved five zero.
All right, moving on to number seven, the consent agenda. The superintendent and the treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the Board of Education in the adoption of the consent agenda means all items are adopted in one single motion unless a member of the Board, the treasurer, or the superintendent requests that any item be removed from the consent agenda and voted upon separately. Number one is the minutes of the March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular board meeting, attachment J. Number two is recommend a resolution to approve the open enrollment certification permitting enrollment of students from any district in the state of Ohio. Number three is to approve the following employment actions, maternity leave for Sarah Sergeant from August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two to September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Number four is additional summer hours not to exceed forty, or no, no more than twenty-nine, twenty-nine hours per week at the per diem rate for Brooke Spafford from May first to July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Number five is a one-year additional duties contract for the contract year of two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, as listed. Number six is a one-year supplemental contract for the year two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, as listed. Number seven is pay Sean Ellis two hundred dollars from the Boys Basketball Donation Fund for compiling stats for the twenty-one, twenty-two season. Cody Rice two hundred dollars from the Boys Basketball Donation Fund for writing and publishing post-game reports to the athletic website and outside media. And pay Anthony Hugo five hundred dollars for assisting with bowling from Bowling Donations Fund and Athletic Donation Fund. Number nine is a nine-month classification, classified contract for the contract year twenty-one, twenty-two to Joshua Mauser, general maintenance, at a rate of nineteen thirty-nine per hour. Oh, I'm sorry, seventeen thirty-nine per hour. And number nine is student workers for the contract year twenty-one, twenty-two at nine dollars and thirty cents per hour. Jordan Mitchell and Jared Dixon. Any items being removed?
So on number five, you should remove Kurt Haverhill and vote on it separately.
Number eight, shouldn't that be twenty-two, twenty-three school year, the new year, or zero? Has already started?
It'll be for, it'll be for this year, and I guess the summer as well, so we could put it for twenty twenty-two, I guess.
Okay. So he already started, then?
Yes, it's already started.
Okay. So which place?
Twenty twenty.
So we'll go ahead and call roll for everything except for the one-year supplemental for curriculum.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Haverhill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved five zero.
So now we need to vote on the one-year additional duties contract for Kurt Haverhill for the overnight chaperone.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Haverhill.
I'm staying.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved, four yeas, one exception.
Public participation, the Board President reserves the right to limit time. The public participation section of the Board of Education agenda is specifically designed for the public to address the board with their compliments, concerns, and/or questions. The Board welcomes your comments. If you wish to address the board regarding a problem, the Board will remind you of two things. First, your comments should be factual and respectful to the rights of others. Second, before coming to the Board with this specific problem, you should first address the problem with the appropriate teacher, staff member, or administrator. Come in, like, please, state your name.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is David Turkin, that's with a T, E R K E N. I'd like to let you know about my background a little bit. I have a four-year degree in forestry, I have a four-year degree in engineering, I'm a retired naval officer, I'm a professional engineer in the state of Ohio. I have nine items I'd like to bring up this evening. First and most important one is that I understand that vaping is a problem in schools nowadays. It's not when I was in school, smoking was a problem. I understand as, let me call this a rumor, I, I prefer to call it a rumor. I've heard a rumor that students have been searched to see if they have vaping equipment on their persons. I am calling it a rumor because I cannot possibly believe it is true. I haven't had a chance to talk to the chief of police or my attorney yet, I just heard about this yesterday. I'm hoping that I'm just plain wrong. That was item one. Item two, I've been to a great many public meetings in my work as an engineer, as a naval officer, as a citizen of the city of Vermillion. I've seen a lot of executive sessions done. Normally, they're done at the end of the meeting after everything else. I feel a little bit hurt about what happened tonight. That was item two. Item three is education. Obviously, I believe strongly in education. My father-in-law went to school in a horse-drawn cart. He graduated from high school. He was a well-educated man. His first job was delivering papers on horseback. His final job was teaching engineers at Nordson how to make the equipment they designed work. I believe in public education. I was a recipient of public education, and it was a good education. I learned Latin, I learned French, and I got into school, the first school that I applied to, I applied and got an immediate acceptance based on the education I had. I appreciated that. I'm hoping that in Vermillion today, students are getting a similar high school education. That's my third item. Fourth item is a person's right to privacy. If a student is asked where they sleep at home, and where their parents sleep, and who they eat dinner with in school, where they're supposed to be learning reading, writing, arithmetic, and history, I have a very grave concern that the privacy of citizens who have a right to their privacy is being compromised. I have major concern there. My fifth item is what we euphemistically call sex education in school today. In my day, it was called human reproduction education. I hope that the only sex education my children are getting in school is human reproduction education taught in a human reproduction class where the things that are being taught are known by the parents. If I find out that there's a green-haired teacher with facial protrusions of pieces of metal stuck through her face, talking about how she likes both men and women over the weekend, and talking to students about it in class, I think that their class time is being misused, and I think they may be breaking Ohio law. I will be looking into that. My next concern, this bothers me very much to even say it, there is something called critical race theory nowadays. I have seen some information in the last few days, which makes me think that some of the things in our education that we're beginning to look at before this board are actually critical race theory. I, I hope I am wrong. The next item is that there is right and wrong, there is good and bad, there are people who excel, and there are people who don't do as well, and we need to be honest about these things and face them that way. That was my seventh item. My eighth item is deception. I hope that there is no intent at deception in the way that things were presented tonight, because what I saw presented, and what might be in those courses, does not appear to be the same. And my last item, I heard you talking about active shooter training. Several years ago, I went to an active shooter training session, it was a two-day session at one of the local churches, and I saw probably seventy-five people from various educational facilities, and many people from church facilities there, and the training was very interesting. Now, I heard that you're going to spend seven thousand, five hundred for active shooter training this year. I hope this is not the first year, because I remember when the Board started discussing this, and it was a while back, and I hope this is just ongoing training, because it is very important. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Turkin, before you leave, can I get your phone number or email, so if there were some things that needed to be addressed, we could get back to you?
Thank you.
Is that all right? Wanted to give this to the presiding officer, a little critical of race theory in second quarter, for you guys. Got five, six things I want, six things I want to talk about tonight. First, my name is Joseph Johnson. My daughter is a student here, and I came in last week and inspected your curriculum, because my daughter got a health assignment called My Wellness Triangle. And what My Wellness Triangle is, is a health assessment in a social learning, emotional learning setting that says personal things about my kid, and forces them to do this in a public setting. So with that being said, you knew when I came today that I was going to talk about this, and I don't see Phil here today, and I did notice as you were walking in, Presiding Officer Eric Johnson, that you said, "Thanks, Phil, that's great." So he couldn't make it to the meeting, but he could make it so that you guys can take an hour-long executive session, and then come back in and alienate. This guy's, how old are you, sir? How old are you?
Seventy-four.
He's seventy-four years old. You made a seventy-four-year-old man wait for an hour.
That's correct.
And you did that because you know that I caught you guys, right? I caught you guys.
We did that because we had to talk about those contracts.
No, that's not right, right? It's not right at all, and I know that you didn't talk about contracts for an hour straight. That is a line, and the reason why you did it was because you wanted, you knew that I was going to talk to you about this stuff. I'm not letting you off the hook, I'm sorry, that's the way that it is. I'm not letting you off the hook, I'm sorry, that's the way that it is. The second thing I want to talk about is the threat assessment thing that you have going, all right? You guys have a habit of giving my kids' information to third parties, and a lot of that information is protected under FERPA and under HIPAA, and I haven't seen you guys pay any penalties for contact tracing and sending that to a third party, haven't seen you pay any penalties for sending my kids' information through software programs like Ripple, which you guys said that you weren't teaching out of, which I inspected the curriculum and found out that you were indeed teaching out of it. So I want to know that my kids' data is not being sent to a third party, all right? And that's important, all right? That's my kids' data that you're sending to somebody else that somebody's going to put in a profile that's going to affect my kid 10 years down the road. I don't want you guys having access to, I don't want the district having access to and giving it to a third party, personal, private, protected information. This is not compromiseable. Fourth, I've came to the Board since August and came to you about stuff that would cause harm to my child and concerns, and I have been lied to, I've been misled, I've been stalled, I've been, done everything but told the truth. You guys are harming children, all right? Your policies are harming children. I'll say it again, Vermillion local school policies are harming your children, and they're not doing anything about it. That curriculum you guys approved and none of you looked at it, not a single one of you looked at it, all right? And it's got stuff in there like grooming, trying to get children to manipulate behavior that an abuser uses to gain access and trust to a potential victim and then coerce them into abuse and reduce the risk of getting caught. That curriculum that you guys just approved has critical race theory in it, they introduce it through the books.
We haven't approved it. We haven't approved it.
Well, I'm sorry.
It was just discussed.
Yeah, it sounds like you guys approved it, there's not, not much that you don't five-vote, so.
But we're going by the books, we didn't approve anything.
Well, I'm telling you that there's critical race theory in it, and I only looked at a small amount of curriculum and I found a whole lot wrong. You guys aren't doing your jobs. You're not going through the curriculum, you're not doing what you're supposed to do. So, for the record, you said Ripple was not active and it wasn't being used and it was, all right? That's a harmful action in my opinion. CRT was not being taught, you said it wasn't being taught, but we saw Ripple was being taught, so CRT is being taught. None of this is education, the stuff that I just talked about. Some of it's seriously illegal. And why is that? Because it causes harm to a child, and you guys are professionals and supposed to protect children, and it's not like nobody warned you about it beforehand. My kids' health information is private, and I'm sick of you guys giving it to other people, and I'm sick of you violating their rights and saying it's education. It's not, it's indoctrination and it's violating their rights. Health assessments by anyone that is not the kid's doctor are illegal. How many times do you guys get to break this law without repercussions? Grooming behaviors by staff, whether it be by curriculum or direct behavior, will not be tolerated, and all parties involved will be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law, including the people at the top who protect them and promote this garbage. You guys are not helping our kids, you're not doing the right thing, and you think you're getting away with it and you're not, and it needs to stop. So what I'm going to do today is I'm going to start a group. We're going to get 250 votes because I'm pretty sure 250 people inside this district are not satisfied with what you're doing, and we're going to have a little election and we're going to recall you then. So if you hear that, we're recalling them. You get a hold of me, Joseph Jones, and I will make sure that we get these guys out of here. Disgraceful.
It's supposed to be a question, though, it's not.
Our session, our session.
Motion to adjourn? Wait. Come to here. What's that?
I don't want to cut anymore corners.
I can say something before we go on.
Sure.
Mr. Jones, we did have quite a.
Mrs. Ennis, are you a teacher? Are you a former teacher?
Yes, I am, actually.
So your values don't align with mine?
No, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about the executive session is what I want to talk about.
I honestly don't care. You guys don't do anything consistently, your word means nothing.
We do.
But she's still going to speak.
You must have cared.
You have to be respectful in the meeting.
I'm just telling you that.
Well, you're being respectful and telling me speaking.
Executive session.
No, it's, it's fine.
You made an old man wait for an hour.
Okay, we're moving on, moving on. Number 10, date and locations of upcoming board meetings. Okay, we're moving on, we're moving on.
If you don't want a circus, don't bring one here.
Okay, we need to move on.
Okay, we'll move on.
Thank you.
You done?
I don't know, did you want to go on to executive session again?
Number 10, date and locations of upcoming board meetings located at Vermillion High School in the Workforce Development Room, 1250 Sanford Street, Vermillion, unless noted. Regular meeting Monday, May 9th, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. Regular meeting Monday, June 13th, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. Regular meeting Monday, July 11th, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. Motion for adjournment.
I'll move.
A second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Step?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0 and timed at 7:51 p.m.